I don't want to get yelled at by Grace, so I will turn my microphone on. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Meramec Planning Board for February 20th, 2024. Let's see, do we have a flag in here? Let's, let's do our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to be a flag on the island states of America and the Republic, where which is stand one nation under God and visible, Lord of the Injustice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Let me remind everybody that addresses the board to make sure your microphones are turned on and you speak clearly into them so the folks at home can hear you as well as our minute takers. The next planning board meeting after tonight is currently scheduled for March 5th, 2024 at 6:30 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room, which is our usual haunt, not this room. Let's see, do we have any alternates that need to be appointed to voting positions? Two, so you have, we can't put somebody into Barbara's spot. Mark's spot is alternate or full? He's an alternate. So are we missing any full members?
Yeah, one full-time member.
We're missing one full-time member? So one, one, two, three, four, five, six. Yeah, the, one of you can vote. Do you guys want to split the two agenda items or one of you vote and the other one nod or?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Okay. Okay, so you get the first item, you get the second item.
Okay.
The substantive item, which is three and four on the agenda. Okay, Nelson, you're the voting member for tonight. Okay. That generally completes our call to order items. We have a consent agenda with two items on it. What is the will of the board with respect to the consent agenda? Is there a second? Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? That is six of us, six, zero, zero, to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, a question. I would like to have asked a question about those, but I think the last time I tried to do that, I was told we couldn't do that with consent agenda items, asking why they are.
So if you have any questions about the consent agenda items, you can ask them, but the, that would cause that item to be removed from the consent agenda so that discussion could occur and then it would be voted on separately. So you can ask questions about anything that you want, but doing so will pull it off of the consent agenda.
But it can still be voted that night.
Yeah.
Can, yeah. Oh, okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah, I mean, as soon as we finish the consent agenda, we would discuss whatever item was pulled off and then that could be moved and voted on as well.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I wasn't sure how you're handling those.
Yeah, no, and that, that's, you know, for any night, anybody that's got any questions about a consent agenda item, don't feel like you can't ask. You certainly can. It just is the, it will result in that being separate, dealt with separately off of the consent agenda because the whole concept of a consent agenda is, doesn't require any discussion.
Yeah, it will be discussed that night.
Yes.
I didn't want to hold the thing up, but.
I would think that if, if there are questions on the consent agenda, I would think the ability to call community development and ask those questions ahead of time might save discussing it tonight, but that's up to you.
Yeah, I don't always.
I'm, I'm not going there, I'm just saying.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, nobody's obligated to call them, but if you wanted to and it helped to resolve a question you had, feel free to do that. And if not, then, you know, pull it off the consent agenda and it only takes a second, less than this conversation has just taken, so, to do that. Okay. Item three on our agenda is Keith Curran as the applicant and Gleason Company LLC as the owners in its review for acceptance and final approval of a site plan to construct a 7,650 square foot manufacturing building with associated office space and other associated site improvements. The parcels located at 63 Turbine Way in the I-1 Industrial and Off-Fore Conservation, Elderly Housing Overlay and Town Center Overlay Districts. It's Tax Map 5D1, Lot 5-1. It is also Case Planning Board 2024-2 and it has been continued from our January 16th and February 6th Planning Board meetings. Is there anything that we need to know from the applicant calling?
Um, so this applicant was before us for a conceptual meeting. A couple of months ago, they are proposing to construct a 7,600 square foot manufacturing building with office space and associated site improvements. Other than that, we can take the applicant.
All right, who's here? These chairs over here for you.
Okay, I also have some boards, check set up an easel over there too, or?
An easel, or if you have it electronically, you can put it on the TV if you want, whatever works for you. Plug it into that computer right there, it should be up there. And then Grace already stole my remote control, so we need her to come turn the TV on.
Grace?
I'm just teasing her because she actually asked me to take the remote control and I made her take it. There we go, that's on. Does also continue without scanning, but.
Do we need Grace? Here she comes. Where's your IT guys? You need to bring them with you.
Engineers don't need no IT guys.
How you doing?
Excellent.
Evening, boys.
Keep it close to you.
Sure, my name's Keith Curran. I'm for, I'm for Ball Engineering. I'm here for Gleason Company. Ward Senior's here, the owner. And attorney Eli Lano is also here with me. Yep. So as you already mentioned, it's 63 Turbine Way, it's about 5.85 acres. So site, that's just existing conditions plan. This was previously subdivided off. And it's at the end of Turbine Way.
Yep, microphones picking up.
Yep, sorry, sorry, it's, yeah. It's the end of Turbine Way. It was actually, like I said, it was previously developed. There was buildings there in the past, now there's existing concrete pads and a lot of pavement out there now. There's also existing water and sewer that's out there now that I'll show you that we're looking to connect to. So again, this is just the existing conditions plan. So I'll pull up now the, I can get to it, the site plans. All right. So you guys have a full, this is the full set, so I'm just going to get to the, um, the sheets that I want to show. So this is the overall, the overall layout. So actually, the building's actually 8,500 square feet. That initial number was during the preliminary. Since that time, we made it a little bit larger. So the, we're held slash industrial is 6,000 square feet. The office up front, which is this piece up in here, is actually 2,500 square feet. We're proposing nine parking spaces and that's listed as a waiver. Again, these, an existing drive that comes through here, there'll be a gate here with a knock box and then they're able to access the site and the parking's in the front. A lot of the site's going to remain untouched. So a lot of the impervious area now, they want to utilize for laydown and so forth. But one thing to note is that we actually are decreasing the impervious area slightly. So they're a little bit added impervious that we're adding here. We actually moved pavement from here. As I mentioned, again, I'll go to the other plan. So this is just the layout. So right now, again, they're using the site. Tractor trailer's just going there now, they can spin around. Also provided truck turning, showing that a WB67 is going to get in and out of the site as it does previously. The building's not blocking that. So the next plan, these are just blowups to the layout, just to make sure we're hitting the scale that's required by the, by site plan approval. So again, this shows the building, the existing drive coming in, the parking here in front, the front door, this also shows some building mounted lights. As the lighting plan, that will show that a little bit more detail later. And the idea again, this is where the pavement will be removed and actually be low and seated so it's stabilized. Another thing important to note is, we did previously meet with the Conservation Commission. They provided comments that we have addressed. You should have got a copy of that this morning. That meeting with them was on January 22nd. So this is again, same thing, it's just the other part of the site, northern part of the site. So again, the important thing to note here is, again, the idea is really basically putting up the building and adding some parking in front, most of the rest of the site's going to remain untouched. Also to note, we are in the shoreline protection zone, so we will need a permit from the NHDES. So we haven't submitted that yet, we want to get through this, you know, this permitting process and then we're going to submit right after that to them. That's the only state permit that, that we need. To note that also, we're under, we're disturbing less than an acre of land. And again, to talk about, again, not increasing impervious, we're not proposing any stormwater treatments for long-term. We have stormwater control during construction, where again, we've submitted a plan for that and that's part of the plan set and also a stormwater management plan. But as of now, again, there's no existing really stormwater treatment there and we're not adding impervious. So again, we're not proposing any like stormwater basin or infiltration practices. And that was mentioned during the preliminary meeting, Greg Demona from our office was here. This is the erosion control plan. And this is just during construction, shows the erosion controls, so fans and so forth. But I wanted to show you, go into the, actually we'll show you the layout, lighting plan for us. Again, there's only one site light proposed, which is right here, plus the building lights and this is just the phonometrics. So it shows the foot channels for the site. So here, this shows, again, it's tough for me to see on the screen, but there's, like you said, existing water and sewer there now, the idea is connect to the existing services that are there. So the water main, I believe, again, I'm having a hard time seeing on the screen, but it's right here. So we're going to connect off here and provide a domestic line and a fire protection line. And there's an existing sewer, we're actually just going to connect. So again, the utilities are here. There's also existing power lines out there. We're going to go underground from the existing overhead and tie that also into the building. No gas proposed, I believe, when correctly, it's heat pumps, right, to heat, so it'll be electric. That's really, that's it unless you have questions. The one thing to note and came up with comments, there's two existing hydrants out there. So there's no proposed new hydrants, we're going to utilize the existing two hydrants. There's one here. And I believe the other one is right here. So that meets the requirements from the fire department, spacing requirements.
Okay. So our first task is to determine whether the application's complete and has enough information for us to make decisions. And you've asked for five waivers, which sort of are tied to that question. So can you speak to your waiver requests?
Sure. Two of them for landscaping. So as they're now, there's, there's no landscaping. This is, you know, this is kind of tucked behind, it's not visible or anything. So we're asking for a waiver from the two, this two landscape, I think it was a landscape plan and the landscaping for parking, I think was the other one, I have it, I have it here, but. Yes, so the first one was section 31101 for the parking area landscaping. And the other one is section 3.09, section 4.14, that's the landscape plan. So again, we mentioned this during the preliminary also, again, with the idea that this is hidden back there, it's already developed, there's no landscaping out there now, we're not adding impervious. We're basically putting a building on top of what is a concrete slab now.
Okay.
So that's, those are two of them. The other one is the minimum parking spaces. That's Regulation 3.11, Table 1. We are only proposing nine spaces, I believe the requirement per square footage, off memory here, I think it's 17. This is, a lot of this is automated. There's no retail component to this, so there's no customers coming, it's just for employees only. And they actually will have less than nine, they'll never have more than nine employees. We just decided just to park the front and that's how we came up with nine, but that's more than adequate for what their needs are. And then the fourth one was the idea that it's supposed to be showing on the plan, trees that are larger than 15 inches in diameter. We're not disturbing any trees. So we didn't see any need to call those out on the survey because none of, everything within our limit of work is already disturbed. So there's no tree cutting involved with this proposed development at all. And the fifth one, which we just added, which we sent you with the cover letter, we received this morning, we just received the letter on Friday, so we got it just in time, was this stormwater study. On initial submission, we did a stormwater memo and then now we're formally requesting the waiver, again, tied to where we're under an acre disturbance and we're not adding any impervious area, so we're looking for a waiver for the storm, for the stormwater. Also note though, we did provide the stormwater management plan for the, during the construction, the correct, you know, BMPs that are needed to make sure that we don't have any erosion control issues. So we did submit, submit that information, including a law, a log and a inspection, inspection form as part of that.
Okay. Let me, so thank you for going through the waivers and I'll have all the board members able to ask some questions in a second. I would like you to speak more about the stormwater or the drainage study because the concern I have is I don't know that the site was ever engineered at all. And so all of the concrete pads and things which you can leave in place and maybe even reduce a little bit, I don't know that those were ever engineered correctly or that there was ever the appropriate stormwater management practices put into place for those. And so I'm, I'm stuck on that waiver right now and.
Okay. So what we did was one thing, we made sure that we're following the existing drainage pattern. So what goes to, you know, to the, to the east, west, north and south, it stays the same. Because again, we're basically putting a building on top of an existing slab. We're not changing the grades.
Well, you're not changing it from the, the slabs and things that are out there, but when somebody built those slabs and things, they changed it. And they didn't put any drainage or do any calculations or any engineering because it probably wasn't required at the time or maybe they didn't comply with the regulations at the time, whatever happened. But all of those things that exist out there did change the stormwater plan by creating all that impervious surface. And so using that as the starting point of the calculation is the part that I'm trying to get my head around.
Sure, so the point I'm getting at is that we're reducing the impervious slightly. We're not creating any adverse effect to stormwater based on what's there now. And so there is no adverse, I mean, there's pavement out there that now sheets off, has a buffer between that and the river. So again, it's, that's actually naturally treated, we're maintaining those buffers. We're not going anywhere closer than the existing impervious already is. So that natural buffer that's there between there and the river, for example, already acts as a treatment. So that will still be in place under this.
But if it's sheet flowing off, it doesn't really act like a treatment, does it?
Sure, you have a large, nice buffer between the edge of pavement that's there now, which again, we're not changing and the, the river. So that, you have that wooded, you have that wooded buffer slope.
If there's pollutants and things that are on any of the paved areas or any of the slabs or things like that, or fertilizer, anything that's used even on the neighboring properties that flows over this property, what stops it from going in the river?
Just the, the natural buffer that's there. So the point we're getting at is we're not, we're not, like I said, because we have a limited disturbance, ground disturbance and we're not adding impervious, again, there's no requirement by the state and that's why we're asking for the waiver, but also again, just as an engineering, there's no adverse effect by what we're adding. It's, sites are being previously used, right? So we're not adding more traffic, so, you know.
It's, it has been previously used and, but that's the whole point is, I don't know that it's ever been engineered to be functioning correctly as it sits there today. And it may be doing any number of things environmentally as it's performing today, which has been permitted to exist for decades or whatever it is, but doesn't mean that it's functioning correctly. And so waiver and saying, well, we're not making it any worse, or maybe we're making it a little bit better, still doesn't get us to a compliant site, I don't think.
Right, right.
Compliance site in which, in what aspect, I guess I'm asking, like, for your stormwater regs?
Yeah, stormwater regs.
You have the local stormwater regs? Yeah, because I, I don't have those, I don't have those in front of me. So is there a particular section that I mean, that you're concerned about? Is it infiltration?
Well, part of it's developing a plan and having it peer reviewed so that we know that we're not having anything run off the site that shouldn't be and it functions as it would be if the original development had been engineered according to regs.
Yep, so I know you had, Fosse and O'Neil, did you peer review? And again, they, they seem, I don't, again, I have that in front of me, I can pull that up, but I don't remember them having concerns about it, about the stormwater.
Well, they only peer review what you give them though, and you asked for a waiver of that. So they didn't have a plan from you guys to peer review.
No, I understand, but they didn't ask for, they didn't ask beyond for what we provided, I believe.
No, they normally don't weigh in on a waiver request. They sort of look at that and, they don't, they don't ever offer an opinion one way or another on a waiver request because if we grant a waiver, then that, that provision's out of, out of play.
Sure, I mean, again, my thought is it's hardship, this is, you know, it's a resident, you know, sorry, a company that's been here and been using the site. And again, that'd be a hardship for them, it's a small little building, you know, so any kind of stormwater, if you're looking for that, that would be a hardship on them that engineering wise, don't deem, I don't deem necessarily, neither does the state. Because again, we don't need that state permit and then as, except for shoreline. And again, the, the idea that we're not increasing impervious, they, they are, they go under the, the context that you're not, you know, you're not disturbing, since you're not increasing impervious, they're not detrimental to that, to the shoreline permit. So I've had numerous discussions with them, making sure that again, we weren't going to have, get hung up with them and it was all about, don't, don't add any impervious, don't add any area within the whole 250-foot buffer, shoreline buffer.
From your review of the site and also from the board members obviously being from here, have there been any indications historically that would have been concerns or have you seen any lack of sites?
Sorry. Sorry, again, Eli Lano from Bernstein Sure. I was asking if in. It is now. I just, thank you. If the board has any indications, and I do believe that some members took site walks, certainly you can see when a site loses stability, you see it with new, new sites and construction. There's a reason we do all the, the wattles and the stormwater management plan, et cetera, because until that site stabilizes, you get erosion and runoff and you do have the issues of all of those potential pollutants and things we're trying to keep out of the river going into the river. This site not being disturbed in this area, has there been any indication either from you or in your professional opinion that would show that we are at risk in that area where some greater defense of that shoreline protection buffer would be necessary?
Sure, nobody asked for any greater defense, we just want to comply with the regulations. So an unengineered site next to the river with a lot of, a lot of pervious surface, creating sheet runoff, that's an indication that there's something to go look at and to know more about. And I don't know that there's anybody that's looked at a specific site and said there's pollution coming from this site, but as to pollution in the Meramec River, yeah, I think that's pretty well documented. So that's where the, that's where the reasoning and the concern comes from. And it's not that we're beating you up for the history of a site, but here's the chance to set it right going forward. And it's probably the only chance to set it right for the next 30 years.
I think the fact that nobody has looked at the drainage and everything that's coming off of that for the, the past 20, 30, 40, 50 years is not a reason to, and, and to sit there and say, well, we're not doing anything worse. That doesn't mean that you're doing what should be done. If you had come before us 30 years ago with this plan, we would have asked for these things. The fact that we didn't because they weren't required 30 years ago doesn't mean that we shouldn't look at them now. We're talking the Meramec River. This is something that anytime you're going near the river, we should be looking at. The fact that nobody has looked at this for the past however many years because, well, nobody looked at it before, we didn't have a problem. So we don't know that we don't have a problem because we've never looked at it. I think we need to do something about looking at. And, and I know it's not necessarily your problem because you're inheriting this, but the fact that nobody has looked at this, I think we need to look at it.
I think the other waivers that you requested are easy to grant or easy to consider for these. Those all make a lot of sense for all the reasons that you laid out. I just haven't been, I haven't had enough information to persuade me to grant a waiver on the stormwater study at this point. Others that want to weigh in or have comments? Nelson?
Well, I would just second everything you and Lynn have said. I completely agree that we should be looking at this and this is an opportunity to look at it that may not come back. And so I think we need to do that. And I'm pretty sure if you had gone to the DES for your shoreline intrusion, they would expect it. I'm pretty sure of that, but that's not the reason.
So there's no alteration of terrain permit needed because again, it's a small project. So it doesn't meet that threshold. And the only reason we have to go to shoreline is because of the, because of the Meramec River. And again, we had conversations with them, they, they don't actually ask for a stormwater report if you're not increasing impervious. So in that, we're not touching that 50-foot. You know, obviously, we went into that 50-foot buffer, that's a whole different story. But since we're not in that, that 50-foot and we're only within the 250-foot, then they don't require, they don't require a stormwater, so they're not increasing impervious.
That's a fair point, but it's also a two-edged sword because the fact that they're not looking means that maybe we should. Or if they had it covered and we could say, well, they've got this, we don't have to, then we could sort of operate in a, in an organized way. But I do agree that it says something to say that they're not asking you questions about it. Maybe they don't think they can, maybe they think that an improvement makes it better or whatever. But it also suggests that if, if they're not looking, maybe somebody else should, so. Other comments or questions by members of the board or things that you want to share with us?
I was just going to mention the landscaping, I have little issue with that too because our desire is to make landscaping a visual thing, which from the point of view of river travelers, this is exposed area that probably should have some landscaping of some kind to address the visual from the river.
Yeah, I, I've never been on the river at that point to know where the water level is or what the bank looks like or what you can actually see, but.
If you look at the GIS, that, at the overhead, you'll find that along the river there is a very, very large buffer of trees.
Yeah, there is a lot of screening of the potential buildings.
I have an arrow, I think, on here if I can get this.
I mean, you can go to Google Maps and you can see it. There's a, there's a large buffer of trees between this site and the river. And this site is, is down. You're, you're going downhill from DW Highway all the way down so that anybody above, see, you can see along the river, there's a huge buffer of trees. So I don't have any problem with that. And going down from DW, you're going down, you're not going to see anything below there.
No, I'm not worried about that side, I'm worried about the riverside.
And the riverside, you can see, there's a huge buffer of trees along it.
It's a huge buffer right through here, the whole length.
There is a green spot on the map.
Yep, yep.
I don't know if those are big trees or little trees or grass.
Yeah, I could, I could show you Google Maps if you want, but they're big trees.
I've been by it, they're.
If you drive, if you're, if you're floating down the river on a kayak, you're not going to see anything on that site.
Okay, thank you.
Fair point, I guess though, folks that have had some direct observations of it, you know, have, have shared their views of things. So what do we do about the, the waiver request? If in terms of the board's approach, we have come to treat acceptance to be related to granting or not granting waivers. And so if there's a waiver for an element of the plan that we would not grant the waiver of, it also means the application isn't complete. And so I don't, I, I can't speak for all of the votes, but it seems to be where the board is heading is to say, we need to see that drainage plan and that would make the application complete so we could review it and get it peer reviewed as well.
Yep.
What, I, I want to open up the floor for you to speak, whatever you'd like to address to the board on that subject, either acknowledging or, or giving us reason to, to head in different direction or whatever you can do.
Yeah, I spoke to the reason why we requested the waiver. So, you know, we, you know, asked that you grant the waiver, but if you're not going to, we can provide, you know, a stormwater part, part of your regulations, you know, pretty quick turnaround for the next hearing.
I think that's what we want.
Okay, so they have to be peer reviewed, which means we have to have 10 days to give it to Fosse and O'Neil to review it, peer review. I don't know what the submission deadline, I don't think you'll make the one in two weeks, whatever that meeting is, but you're probably the second March meeting.
I have no problem with the other waivers. I'd be happy to grant those, there's, there's no issue there. It's only with the, the drainage.
Yeah, those were easy for me as well. Oh, go ahead.
Potentially at the board's pleasure, could we recess for just a moment to speak with our client?
Yes, thanks, yeah, absolutely. So we'll take a five-minute or less if you come back quicker. Yes, thanks. Yeah, absolutely. So it will take a five minute or less if you come back quicker. Microphone's back on. Let's, let's conclude the recess and we'll suspend the consideration of item number three, take up item number four, and then we'll have a discussion with the folks from item three in a second. Item four on agenda is Colt Refining Inc. as the applicant and King Herrick LLC and Evan Realty LLC as the owners. Review for consideration of an amendment to a conditionally approved site plan for ninety seven thousand six hundred square foot light industrial facility and an associated site improvements to split construction of the site into two phases. Phase one is proposed to consist of all site improvements and sixty five thousand two hundred eighty-two square feet of the proposed building. Phase two is proposed to consist of the remaining thirty one thousand nine hundred eighteen square feet of the proposed building. The parcels are located at twelve A Star Drive and an unnumbered parcel off Herrick Street and King Street in the I one Industrial and Aqua Conservation Districts. Tax map three D one, lot two dash one and twenty dash one. Tax map three D two, lot twenty dash one. Case planning board twenty twenty four dash five. Colleen, do we need to know anything before we hear from the applicant?
So this was a conditionally approved site plan that we granted, I believe, maybe last month, two months ago now. They're looking to amend or create a phasing plan for the project. It'll be split into two phases with phase one being all site improvements and sixty five hundred plus or minus square feet of proposed building being built. And then phase two will consist of the remaining just under thirty two thousand square feet. Jason, you're all set to talk.
We just went ahead on our agenda to the next item. We'll circle back to you guys in a second.
Thank you Chairman Best, members of the planning board. Jason Hill with TF Moran. As Colleen noted, we're seeking a, an amendment to the approved site plan, conditionally approved site plan for this facility to simply construct a smaller footprint under a fa- under phased approval. Whereas we'd build approximately sixty five thousand two hundred eighty-two square feet in the first phase and we'd like the, essentially we're asking for a five year extension to build, build out the remaining thirty one thousand square foot and change consisting of phase two, which is a near term expansion of the prop, of the facility that the owner envisions occurring, but just due to the particular circumstances that we're looking at today with regards to what they're looking to do in the immediate term versus the near term. That's the rationale for the request. We are not proposing to change any of the architecture, although the entrances have changed just slightly along the northern facade from what was approved. The image of the building and the architectural components will remain unchanged. We are proposing to construct all of the infrastructure in the first phase, meaning the parking driveways, all the
Generator site.
All the site utilities.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask is.
The only thing that they may omit in the first phase is this, the loading docks for the expansion. They would probably not build that subsequent to concrete, but as, as a matter of practice with regards to the way the drainage system is designed, it's such that that would have to be a finished condition, meaning if it's not concreted, they would have to pave that to binder course so that the drainage would flow to where it's being designed to flow to. So all of the drainage system would be put installed. We'd essentially be left with a, a pad site over that thirty thousand square foot area on the interior.
So there would be a concrete slab under the thirty one thousand?
No, that would be just prepped, subgraded. Structural fill brought in, the, the underlying gravels beneath the building. But that the, what I was saying is that the loading area would all be paved, including the, the future expansion.
So that looks like concrete now. Is that asphalt or concrete?
Well, under the, it's proposed to be concrete as typically with a, a truck loading area. But this section in front of the, the future addition would end up being, if it was not proposed to be done as, as a concrete finish under the first phase of construction, we would put down a binder course pavement such that the drainage that falls on that surface is collected by the, the drainage network that it's anticipated to be collected by.
So you said if it's not concrete, which one are you asking us to consider? Concrete or?
I'm asking you to consider it impervious surface.
Okay, well, but there's, there's a meaningful difference because you've also got the generator pad and a, and a trash compactor in that corner of the building. And you've got a landscape island on the side of the building and you have landscape and sidewalk on the north part of the building, then.
You're going to build it?
So that would all be put in the sidewalk here and all this parking, these entryways, concrete, that sidewalk would be constructed. All of this concrete would be put in here where the loading docks are for the first phase. The only alternative I was proposing was this future phase two loading area may not be concreted underneath, under this proposal. They may instead just put a binder course of pavement. Since they're not going to be trafficking heavy trucking over that area, it would be an impervious surface.
What about the generator pad and the, and the trash compactor pad that's on that corner?
Those could be put in that location in, in anticipation of the building being expanded within five years. And we may even put concrete in this area underneath the first phase. I'm basically reserving the right for the owners to put in like a binder course of asphalt in this area versus, and then when they put in the phase two building, we would put in the, the loading pad at that point. That's all.
Okay, so while it's, while it's phased before building two is, or phase two is built, is that?
This will be gravel, structural fill for the future foundation. So this will be an open space that would be gravelled.
Let me get you to stay close to a microphone so they can hear you. So I understand it's gravel, but it's also i- if those are loading docks, there's a four foot difference in elevation at the edge of that building. And so it's gravel retained by what? That keeps it from falling in the hole.
Be a grade transition just off the, the edge. So, so this is going to be four feet in the air, so to speak. And then those are just graded off where the transition of grade occurred. I would detail that on the final plans that get submitted to the town. That's part of our package when we talked about submitting all the final grading details. So, so this plan, which is what Mr. Price asked me to submit, shows the actual building work that's being contemplated. And then the final grading transition details between phase one and phase, which is essentially the building itself, would actually be shown on the plans that get reviewed subsequent to this conditional approval adjustment.
The generator plan that you've got and the, and the compactor pad that you've got are at a finished grade now.
These are at minus four. This is at minus four because that's the loading zones of four foot grade drop here. This is a, a transitional grade. I think it's grading down. This is high here. We're grading out the four feet of grade change in this zone. So the elevation of that pad, I'd have to check, but I would not propose to change the elevation of the pad. It would be placed at its finished grade elevation. Because it's not going to be altered in two years. All I'm asking for is within five years, they would be allowed to put in the foundation of this building and build that building.
Thank you. So I, I'm not opposed to the phasing plan, by the way. I'm just trying to understand what's going to be built and what's not going to be built so we understand what's potentially. There's always the possibility when you do a phasing plan that phase two never happens and you just want to make sure you understand, will the site function without that being built.
Well, as part of phase one, it's required, we're required to stabilize this area by law. Whether that's a vegetative cover or a permanent gravel condition, those are two different alternate finishes. Which before they sign off on a CO for this occupancy, this has to be, the site itself has to be stabilized, which includes this area. And this would be either gravel.
Stabilized doesn't mean, doesn't tell me the answers to the questions about the landscape island to the right of the building or the si- I mean, you answered the question today, but the sidewalk, all of that stuff will be exactly as shown on plan, just that orange rectangle with phase two is missing. And then the concrete loading dock will be asphalt. That's what you're, so far you've said. Is that right?
You're saying that this concrete will be completed where the new phase one loading dock is done. But that the phase two area for the loading zone may not be finished with a concrete finish.
Got it.
It may be stabilized with a binder course pavement.
Got it.
Just as a cost savings in traffic loading. It's just an option. At the end of the day, it's impervious.
But everything else on this plan will be built as it's shown?
Yes.
Trees, landscaping, lighting. I know you can't do the lighting on the side of the building because the building isn't there.
Yeah, I don't know if we have any lighting on the side.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I need to.
Exit.
Exit. I've got town council meeting that got dumped on top of this, so I'm, but you've got sufficient members here to cover so, but I, but I have to leave, so my apologies to everybody here.
Nelson, you had a question or comment?
Yeah, my comment is, Bob, that we should ask for a drawing, a, a plan of what it's going to, what he's asking for to do. If he wants to show us what phase one looks like with the, whatever changes he's going to make to the concrete pad and the landscaping and the parking in the north, all of those things, that we should have a, a drawing submitted, that this is what he's, what we're approving tonight with the idea that eventually it'll morph into this finished job. It should be compatible with what he wants to do. This, this man is speaking on behalf of an owner who lived here and who may have other ideas. And so I'd like to see a plan that, of what they're actually going to build because as you said, five years from now, well, maybe that's seven years, maybe it's ten, maybe it's, maybe it's something different by that time.
What do you mean something different?
Well, somebody comes up with a revised plan or your, your five years expires and nobody does anything. So now it's seven years, the phase two plan is valid anymore, or any, any of those kinds of things that can happen. And I, I think at a minimum, the plan that Nelson's asking for would be a condition of approval, but it may be something the board wants to see before it votes. And let the board sort that out.
You know, essentially is going to be, everything would be constructed and, and whether or not this finished material of this area is pavement or concrete, that's immaterial to the actual function of the drainage system. It's all designed to handle that runoff. This area would actually be, when I contemplate the grade change, it would most likely, because there's a four foot grade change, it's at the loading. most likely, because there's a four-foot grade change, it's at the loading dock itself, but this is all uh, at finished grade with the, the building. These are all attached. So you'd almost likely end up just grassing this area in because at the end of the day, you bring in the gravel to prepare the foundation in the future. So you'd end up with, it's a grass slope that, um,
So I, I get it and this is gonna sound snarky and I don't mean it to, but you won't always be standing there to explain that. And that's why the plan would have to show it.
Okay. Yeah, I think that, um,
I hope that didn't sound snarky. I really didn't mean it to.
Didn't sound snarky.
I mean, we're essentially talking about, I think, engineering level details. At the end of the day, they don't have a visual component. So in terms of, um,
Well, yeah, they do have a visual, visual component. The building won't be there and it'll be gravel or, or somehow landscaped or seeded or, or not. Um, and it will
Loading area.
Look like something. Um, it'll have a generator that's kind of off at a distance from the building instead of abutting the building. It'll have landscape islands kind of out in space and all of that's fine. But right now I don't have a plan that shows me what that will look like.
I understand what you're asking. When I was planning on, as I discussed, or at least originally with Mr. Price, that those would be, and we had vision, I thought that those would be follow-up items that would be handled, you know, conditionally if it got to that point. And that's for those reasons, I was not requested to submit that level of detail.
Yeah, and I think that's a fair suggestion. Maybe that's the way the board wants to go. I'll sort of let the board, as, as a condition of approval, to have that uh, Phase One plan separated on a different sheet from Phase Two.
I mean, we're certainly committed to providing that detail to the town of Merrimack in one form or another. And obviously, under any review, you know, the town may see necessary.
So the reason for being a pain in the backside over it is like the, the, um, the slope that you're talking about, transition slope from grade to minus four feet is gonna be managed in one way or another. And you talk about, well, it'll be gravelled or we'll have a detail or we'll have whatever. But until it is managed, nobody sort of thinks through all the details to say, well, okay, now the landscape island was at the finished grade. Now it's two feet above what got sloped off of Phase Two. So now where does groundwater go off of that grass into the foundation area for Phase Two? Or did you do something to keep it from going in that direction? Or is that whole landscape island now lowered until later, um, and gonna be built back up?
Okay, I understand.
And, and there's, there's answers to all of those questions, but we just don't have any of them.
And like that would be, I see also in construction, so they decided to build a smaller building during construction. They would be lost their few, they wouldn't be vested the five, five years, but they would handle those details with the town, you know, in the construction phase. You know, we could build a smaller building and just as-built it by right because we're conditionally approved. And so I, I just viewed it as slightly different.
I'm not sure I agree with you that you could build a smaller building with the approval you have. You gotta build what you proposed to the board on your site plan. Uh, you couldn't do less parking spaces. You couldn't do, I mean, if you wanted to have a smaller building, you could come back and propose it. And you probably would get an easy approval, but if you decided that the whole building you were ever gonna build, ever, was gonna be sixty-five thousand square feet and not ninety?
That would likely be correct. It would likely not be CO'd, yeah. So I understand what you're looking for and we can get it to the town in whatever fashion you'd prefer.
Now, I, I am inclined to support the idea that those kinds of things can be conditions of approval, but if other folks on the board disagree and wanna voice that, have at it. I think that those are the kinds of things where I just wanna make sure that somebody's thought through those transitions around the edge of the missing building. And as long as somebody's thought through them, whatever the solution is, as long as there's a solution. And it isn't sort of, you get out there and you're like, oh, my goodness, there's this thing sitting over here. Nobody expected it. Or you decide, well, we're gonna move the generator in the middle of where Phase Two is and then we'll move it later. And you could do that, but sort of on-the-fly engineering really isn't part of the site plan process.
That's right.
Is there any, this might be a redundant question, any concern with the lighting not being on the far side of the building?
So normally lighting is intended for the parking areas for safety and security and those kinds of things. And there isn't any parking on that side of the building. I don't remember the lighting plan to see e- even what level of lighting there was, if it may be minimal or maybe nothing. It faces the railroad, so there wouldn't be any real reason to light facing the railroad unless you needed to use it for, you know, some person heading out there. So I, I don't think it would make a huge difference to me, but
Just wanted to ask.
It's a question. Was there any wall pack lighting on that side of the building?
I don't recall. I believe there was.
This looks like one on that
There's something stuck to the side of the building, whatever it is, but
Yeah. Yeah, those are light wall pack symbols. So there's just a couple, a few wall packs, three.
Three wall packs and then there's a couple facing your parking areas to the north. Scan down a little bit or move the drawing down a little bit, no, the other way, so we could see the parking spaces.
Sure.
So there's at least two, maybe three lights that are on the building covering those parking spaces. Um, so it's a great point. Those parking spaces would need to have some temporary lighting um, to, in order to give you the, uh,
If they're even there.
What's that?
If they're even there. He said they might reduce that number of parking spaces.
No, you must have misunderstood. We're gonna build everything except for the foundation of Phase Two.
Okay.
And the lighting attached to the buildings.
It looks like one of those is gonna be on the corner of Phase One and then two of them are on Phase Two. And so if Phase Two is not there, there's two light fixtures missing from those last half dozen, eight, ten parking spaces.
Yeah, so that would just be a, either a non-lit condition or we'd have to come up with a temporary lighting.
Yeah, and I think, I, I don't, a, a non-lit condition probably doesn't comply with the site plan regulations for a lighting plan because it would be too dark.
Sure, they could, we would definitely address that. They could put in, pull in a temporary, you know, light, um, or something. Alternatively, we could design a pole fixture.
Yeah, pole fixture, a bollard or something like that, but it's a solution and it's
Oh, I'm sorry. We could, uh, yeah, I understand the question about lighting. And that's just a detail that we'd work out, um, through, you know, a typical um, administrative process, uh, with the town's engineers and their agents.
Okay, and so the, part of what we're doing is, they, the engineers and agents don't really know what's on our mind unless we say it. And so, um, I wanna make sure that we're saying that if your, if your proposal is as presented, that all that's missing is the building, then that parking lot needs to be lit as per plan or functionally as per plan, even if it's on a temporary basis. The, the street towards the railroad, I know that there were some slight light packs there. I, I would probably not hold you to lighting that temporarily. The way those wall packs normally would, just because it faces the railroad and there's nothing there. There's no parking spaces. There's no pedestrian way. There's nothing that would have anything there but a car or a truck. And they can light their own way.
Yeah.
That's my opinion, but there's other members of the board that have to weigh in.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, so a couple of questions on the floor, uh, ladies and gentlemen. One is whether this is a condition of approval where we, or do we wanna actually see this plan and vote on it?
I'd like to see it.
I agree with Nelson. I agree. It's a, five years is a long one.
See it?
See it.
I, I would like to see it, but I think we could do it with a conditional approval. With, um, with another plan, like a Plan B, Plan A, Plan B.
So Plan A showing Phase One and Plan B showing Phase Two? And then once you have that in front of you, you'd be ready to vote? Seems to be the consensus of board. So it looks like I'm the only one that would go conditional approval, so I'd get outvoted. All right, so it sounds like where we're heading with this is continuing to our next meeting. How much time do you need to produce a plan like that?
I don't know off the top of my head. Go certain with it.
Yeah, so the next deadline, seminal date would be February twenty-seventh for our March nineteenth meeting.
That's, uh, one week.
It's a week from today.
A week from today, or you could go
No, I can't do that.
Uh, March twelfth for an April second meeting.
Okay.
So you can't do a conditional approval with, um, just expecting that to come back?
So i- if you give a conditional approval, he'd have to submit the plans to Robert and his team, but the board's done its job. So there's nothing for us to look at. We've already voted. If we did a conditional approval. And if you, so if you want to see it, then have him come back and then vote on it. But approving it and then making him come back is kind of a upside-down enterprise, right? What would you do if you saw it and you said, oh, this isn't right. I hate it?
I'm misunderstanding your understanding. I thought we were gonna get something back to look at.
That's, we, that's what seems to be everybody's consensus. And Maureen just had a couple of questions about that because she was thinking we could vote and get it later. And I was like, it's one, it's one or the other.
No, no.
Either you approve it and you defer to the department to deal with the details. And obviously the chair and the vice chair sign off on all the plans eventually, so I would see it, but you wouldn't. And if I didn't remember to look for the detail that you thought was important.
Make it overlook.
Make it overlook it.
And then before we make a motion to continue, if that's the way of the board, just remember, I think you would have to, um, appoint Maureen in for Lynn's position.
Yes, okay, so both of you are in for voting positions now that Lynn's gone for the rest of the night. And, um, you're aiming for the April second meeting with the March?
Yes, twelfth.
Twelfth?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and do you need any more information from us as to what we're looking for for that date?
No, it's, um, I anticipate, like I have a plan set now that's got thirty sheets or whatever. Now it's gonna have sixty, whatever. It'll be two versions of the, it'll be a two-phase set, so.
I, I don't wanna make you do thirty more sheets, but give me at least one sheet that shows the finished building with Phase Two not built and what the rest of the details look like. I don't, I don't necessarily need thirty sheets, but and maybe one is not enough.
One sheet for each topic, one grading, one utility, one landscape. You know, it sounds like that's, it sounds like that's what you want. All, all this full scope of the, the work for Phase One on its own standalone, you know. So I would give you maybe five sheets, one of each topic. You know, a grading plan, a, a site finishes plan, a utility plan if necessary.
The utility may not be necessary, but, um, you decide.
Okay.
So
I think I'm good.
And it, it, the least number of sheets that you can produce that show it, I'm certainly amenable to that. I don't wanna give you, and I certainly don't wanna send this applicant off doing twenty-five thousand dollars more engineering work.
Yeah.
Al- almost the
They'll just be limited to a Phase One, uh, Phase One submission of, uh, just the relevant plan metric sheets.
Yeah.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion by members of the board? Anybody have any concerns about anything else that was discussed as a part of the phase plan or concerns about it?
I just, I just, my concern was I heard a lot of, um, oh, yeah, we could do that. Oh, yeah, we could do that. So even if you were to refer back to this, what all the questions were, because, um, it felt like there weren't, it, it was like, yeah, we could do that, but it wasn't in any plan.
Yeah.
So put it into plan.
Sure, I just didn't wanna limit myself, but I understand it'll be
There was also at least some side discussion about the fire department's vehicles and all of that. And I think all those issues were handled in its first review. But are there any outstanding items to deal with, with fire truck access or?
Yeah, they need to see Chief Manuelli ask for a, um, a plan looking at the King Street, uh, sorry, the Herrick Street driveway. And just base possibly softening up the turning radius, um, here. Just looking at the, that, that entry and exit movement. And so we'll, as part of wrapping up the conditional approval for this project and those comments, I'm gonna have an issue, a release, a new release of the plans to address the final round of comments, so to speak. That being one of them.
Okay, is there anything that you need from us to manage that?
I don't believe so, no. And then we're meeting with, I'm setting up a meeting with, uh, through dawn, uh, via the town council for the easement that gets extinguished. That's a condition of planned board approval. So that's happening in April, I believe.
Okay.
So thank you for
All right, so is there a motion by the board to continue to the May second meeting?
April second.
April second, April second meeting.
Motion, also a motion to continue to the April.
With no further notice to a butters?
Yes, I, I'm making the motion or seconding it. I don't know which.
Well, Count Halim is making it and Nelson is seconding the motion to continue to April second with no further notice to a butters. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero.
Thanks.
Thank you for the presentation and I hope you don't feel like we're beating you up. We just needed to understand.
Mr. Chair, I feel a lot of towns and I think, uh, the way you handle your board is as good as I.
Thank you for saying so. I appreciate the compliment. We're certainly trying. Um, okay, let's go back to item three on our agenda. Keith Curran and Gleason Company, you guys wanna come back up? Uh, Halim made it and Nelson second. Okay, so where we left off is you guys wanted a brief minute to talk about it before we considered what to do. And the board was at least giving voice to the idea that we would uh, continue the item without finding the application complete in order to allow you time to do the drainage plan. How did your conversation go and is there anything else you wanna steer us in any direction on?
No, um, we agree that, that we're fine with that.
Okay, what timeline works for you to be able to do that?
So I understand, yeah, so I understand, we can turn around pretty quick, but I understand, uh, Fussin' O'Neil needs ten days till we do. How much time do they, how long do they take them to get our, we get our storm report from when we actually submit? So that, you know, that, work backwards.
Um, if you submit it, say like tomorrow, whatever, um, we'd get you a, they'd, we send it out for them to give a quote. We'd get that quote. We'd ask for, um, funds for escrow. Once we get that escrow checked, then that ten-day clock starts. So you're probably looking for the April second meeting, um, with that March twelfth deadline. Um, if not, there's a March twenty-sixth deadline for the April sixteenth meeting.
Who's the first one who said April?
April second.
Second meeting and what's the deadline for submission?
Um, March twelfth.
And that submittal is check and escrow and everything by March twelfth?
Yep.
So you gotta get it, uh, uh, enough ahead of time for Fussin' O'Neil to put a price on what their review's gonna cost. How long does that usually take? A day, something like that?
To get a cost, usually the day, maybe the next day.
So that, that time would be fine?
Yeah.
So, um, we are going to, without determining the applications complete, uh, if it's the will of the board, continue it to our April second meeting with no further notice to a butters. Someone wanna make a motion like that?
I'll make the motion that we extend, um, to the, which means April second, yeah.
Is there a second for Kevin's motion? Second by Jamie. Kevin, is that your first motion?
No, I think it's the second one.
All right.
It's like, congratulations.
All in favor, say, no, we gotta be monumental.
Right.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Um, so we'll see you in April second. When I first became the chair of the board and this first opportunity to sign plans, the first night there was signing plans, there was two plans. One, I don't even remember because it was something boring. And the other one was the Homestead Restaurant with the new deck outside. So you know which one I signed first?
Yeah.
The very first plan I ever signed is the Homestead's plan. So I don't even remember what the other choice was, but it was
Wasn't as monumental.
Yeah, it's, you know, a power substation or something like that for PSNH. Okay. Uh, let's see, we're up to number five on our agenda, which is the Planning and Zoning Administrators Report, Board Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Other Items of Concern. Colleen, do you have any report for us?
I don't. Just a reminder, all those books are yours to keep, um, the white books, RSA's. Feel free to take a look at them. They're a real doozy. So if you need some help sleeping, take a look. Um, but that is really it.
Excellent. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
Are we able to access, access this online?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I'll send you the link to it, so you can like do that online as well. Would everyone like that link? I can send it out via email. Okay. Cool.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Any other discussion items or items of concern? Then the last item before we adjourn is the approval of the minutes of February sixth, twenty twenty-four. What say you?
I move to accept the minutes as submitted, Mr. Chairman. I read them through.
Excellent.
I only found a few typos. I won't go into the details.
You can submit typos directly to the department. They can fix those without a motion.
Okay.
Is there a second for Nelson's motion?
I'll second.
Jamie's second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
I'm abstaining because I didn't come to that meeting.
Okay, so Kevin's abstaining, that is a five zero one vote to approve the minutes. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero. We're adjourned. Don't forget to turn your microphones off and thank you everyone for doing the work.
All right, thank you, guys.